Good evening and welcome to the November 7, 2023 Hanson Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hansen Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. All right. Well, we've got a lot of visitors this evening. That's great. But before we get to that, we have got...
A pinch hitting.
So I have not signed those. Okay. We've got a lot of distractions this evening. But before we get to that, we have got Mr. Weeks, pinch hitting for Mrs. Green.
It's a throwback.
And yes, it's a throwback.
All right, announcements. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees. Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Maquon School Reuse Committee, Master Plan Steering Subcommittee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Recreation Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Applications for the Hanson Community Christmas are now available at Town Hall and the library. If you're seeking assistance this holiday season, the application needs to be completed and mailed no later than Saturday, November 25, 2023. You must include proof of Hanson residency to apply. Applications missing this information will not be considered. The annual holiday festival will take place on the town green on Saturday, December 2, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we have some upcoming meetings. Select Board, November 14, 2023, at 6:00, and Select Board, December 5, 2023, at 6:00. I also have some other pieces here. The Conservation Commission, our vendors and our volunteers have been hard at work completing the Bonney Hill Trail Bay Circuit Trail Project. The project began in the spring of 2020 and runs from the new Pierce Avenue parking lot along lower border of the old Plymouth County Hospital property for about a mile. At the Meadows, the trail branches off to the... This looks like it's an example of Bonney Hill. On the left and straight ahead to the newly mowed walks around last Meadows. We have a grand opening for Pierce Ave, which is happening in the Pierce Ave parking lot. 10:00 a.m., Conservation Commission is going to provide a brief history of the trail project. At 10:15, High Street Park Committee will give a presentation on the future of the park. 10:30 to 11:00, we'll have guided walks. The date is Saturday, November 18, with a rain date of Sunday, November 19. That's what the flyer looks like. And then you are invited to Hanson's Senior Center's Annual Veterans Breakfast, Thursday, November 9, at 10:00 a.m. Great folks over there is that flyer as well. And that, I think, concludes the announcements.
Well, thank you very much. Well done, sir. Okay, moving on to our agenda. We have a... Our first item of business is interim town accountant contract discussion. Ms. Green.
Yes, Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board. Our interim town accountant, Eric Kinsherf, came on board with us in January, and the contract that we signed was until November 30 of 2023. We have approached Mr. Kinsherf and asked him if he would... is interested in staying on with the town of Hanson, which he is. And fortunately, the new contract would... There's no difference in terms. So the rate is the same, which is $75,000 for the year. Basically, he would work remotely, be available remotely to the town. He comes in on Tuesdays, and he's here most of the day. He's usually here by 11 or 12, and he's here till 8:00 o'clock at night. So no difference in the terms, and he looks forward to working with us, putting our budget together and things like that. He will... Once basically if the board votes to continue on, he will provide me with a contract that we will sign, and I will send a copy to the board.
We'll have Town Council review at first, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
No change in title as far as interim?
He would be the town accountant, our town accountant at that point.
Okay, so this is to move him to the town accountant?
To our town accountant, yes.
Oh, interesting.
Yes. We had... We brought him in as an interim because the town was not sure if we wanted to stay with someone on a contract basis or hire a full-time accountant. But based on what full-time town accountants right now are being paid and based on what services we get from Eric, it saves us $20,000 a year, and we're getting excellent, excellent accounting services from Eric. So I don't see a need to pay someone more to have someone here full-time when Eric is doing a fantastic job and saving us $20,000 a year.
Okay, great. Have you solicited feedback from other department heads and the other folks that he would be working with? I know we've enjoyed a pretty good relationship with Mr. Kinsherf. I've found him to be very responsive and knowledgeable and even have a sense of humor, which is practically unheard of in an accountant. So, you know, I...
I have not heard one department or one employee say one bad thing about him. Everybody really likes his approach to municipal finance. They like his ideas. They basically... His personality fits in very good with the town. Everybody knows he's here because you can hear his laughter. He's really a breath of fresh air when he comes in. Everybody likes that he's here on Tuesdays for almost a full day, so they don't have to rush to see him. He's here all day, and also, he's available remotely. You send him an email, and he responds, I would say, within 10 minutes, which is fantastic. So...
Did anybody else have any questions?
No, I think Eric's a great addition to the town. I'm glad to... I hope... Glad to see him stay on.
Okay, so are you looking for a motion from us to allow you to enter into negotiations with Mr. Kinsherf, even though you've just outlined essentially what our negotiations are, as a permanent town accountant and not interim?
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
He's amazing.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Fantastic.
Good pickup on that one.
That's great. And moving on, checking along on the good news train, we've got next up, appoint Lisa Clark as treasurer collector. I'm assuming... Is Ms. Clark with us?
Yes, she is.
Okay. I didn't want to be presumptuous. Did you want to join us up here? We apologize for this "where were you on the night of the fifth" type of arrangement. It's what we've got. So, anyway, well, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your interest in the position. Ms. Green, did you want to queue up how we arrived at this decision?
Yes. So we did advertise for the position. We advertised on multiple different platforms. We got some excellent candidates, and myself, Eric Kinsherf, and Jean Sullivan, current treasurer collector, interviewed two candidates who came with prior municipal finance expertise. And Lisa comes to us with 13 years as this treasurer collector in Rockland. Rockland is in elected position, and so unfortunately, she was not reelected. So she did begin a search for the right fit. So she's been working with some other towns, again, in search of the right fit. Wayne Hanson came in. She applied for the position. We interviewed her. Jean Sullivan is very comfortable with her knowledge, her background, her experience. She is certified in both as a certified treasurer, as a certified collector, so she holds both of those certifications. And again, both Eric, Jean, and myself feel that she would be a very, very good fit for the town of Hanson. And with that said, I will turn it over to the board.
Now, don't you also hold a position in some state level...
I'm on the executive board for the Massachusetts Collector Treasurer Association.
Great. Yeah, I noticed that when I was looking through.
And I was on the Education Committee prior to that, and I actually worked with Eric Kinsherf in the town of Sharon. He's amazing.
Okay.
You've got a great guy.
That's good. That's great. So tell us, you know, a little bit about yourself, why you were interested in this position and all of that good stuff.
Well, I'm very excited to take the position in town of Hanson. It's 11 minutes from my home. It's a wonderful, small town, which I'm very excited about. And I've worked with the person that runs the collection process. I'm drawing a blank on his name for some reason. But I, you know, I'm happy to work with him. I've worked with him as well in the town of Sharon on other reporting. I was the elected collector in Rockland, treasurer collector in the town of Sharon, appointed. In both towns, I was there, Rockland, probably 13, 14 years, and the same amount of time in the town of Sharon. I did the last two years I've been searching for a town, and I'm pretty certain that this is the town for me, and I know that you'll be happy with my work. I'm a very dedicated, hard-working person and knowledgeable in the laws that are governed by the treasurer collector's office.
That's awesome. We're really looking for stability. Historically, we've had a lot of turnover in some of our extremely important positions. And with turnover comes turmoil, inconsistency, things get left by the wayside and all of that. We're getting to a point now where we've got stability with our town administrator, our town planner, and all of the other offices in town, departments and boards, what have you. And so it would be no less important to have a treasurer collector who's committed for the long haul.
Agreed.
So I'm hoping that that is your kind of mindset.
That is my plan.
Okay.
I don't want to go anywhere.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Just asking. So you were... You tried Marshfield, you tried Westboro, neither one. Westboro's a haul.
Yes, and that's... I immediately decided the second day traveling to Westboro that I made a fatal error in accepting the position. It's a three-hour round trip commute.
That's... Yeah, I have never been able to be a commuter myself, so I totally understand.
Yeah, so when this came available... And I've known Jean for years as well. So when this came available, I was like, oh, it's so close to home, and it's a nice, small town. So I immediately applied and was excited to pull out the position. And, you know, the reason for Westboro was just the distance.
Right.
It's a good town, you know, and I feel bad, but it's just too difficult on myself. I get up at... Leave at 6:30, and I get home at 6:30. It's just...
When are you going to be able to start?
Yeah.
When are you going to be able to start here?
We decided on December 18.
December 18.
Yeah, so I'll get to work with Jean for a couple of weeks before she retires, so she can give me the lay of the land. So, you know, that is, you know, unheard of. I'm very excited for that, be able to understand, you know. I know what towns, you know, how they work and what I'm supposed to do, but what's different in a lot of towns is like, how do I do such and such for the town of Hanson? So I want to achieve here, so that is a great tool. That's awesome. Any questions?
I guess just kind of a quick one. First and foremost, you probably don't even recognize me, but I was on the Finance Committee in Rockland.
Oh.
You were there years and years ago.
That's funny.
And yeah, I cut my municipal... Cut the municipal rug around that. We had many interactions, so I actually know you.
I'm sorry.
I had a lot more hair, and I didn't have glasses back then.
Oh, okay.
But I guess, similar to what Ann was saying about Westboro, and you might have mentioned it, but you got, you know, you have a series of promotions and all that stuff. We kind of explained some of the things. But like with Randolph, and then Marshfield, and then Westboro, so like, those are like six-to-eight month kind of jumps?
Yeah, two years of searching.
Yeah. What are you gonna... What's gonna make it... What's gonna make you successful here? How do we make your experience in Hanson? Aside from the commute and the drive, what are you looking for in an environment? What are you looking for in support? Is there anything you need from us?
No, I... So I did meet with Jean the other day, and we talked over the staff and how the staff has been there for a long time, and that they're pretty much self-supporting. You know, as far as the... What I need is what I'm going to get from Jean as the background of, you know, how I can succeed and what I need to watch out for. So in a... Like, just Randolph and Marshfield, there are two volatile towns, I guess, to say. And I'm certain and have been told that this is a very steady place right now, and that's what I'm looking for, you know? I'm looking for just be able to go in, do my job, and do my job the best I can for the town. Are you open... I think that the treasurer collector's office has an opportunity with the tax bills to be a point of contact for messages, not willy-nilly messages, but, you know, things like, gee, if you're on a fixed income, here's some programs that you might be able to leverage, or, you know, that type of thing. Is that something that you're open to, or...
I think insert works really well with, like, say, excise tax bills, because, you know, you're reaching more people, you know, people that don't own property. But yeah, inserts are fine. Not a problem with one insert in a bill to communicate.
That isn't something we have historically really done a lot with, but we've been working on a strategic plan, and one of the things that keeps coming up is like, how do we reach people on different, you know, planes? And one of them is, you know, social media, of course, is one way, but people have got to pay taxes.
Right.
You're right, like, excise tax. So to tell people, town meeting's coming up, you know, like, basic stuff, nothing super grandiose, just really basic stuff that we, you know, to engage people.
Yeah, that's not a problem with the bills, as long as it has to do with the town. You're not trying to sell anybody anything.
And what kind of experience do you have on... We've got a couple... We've got like Camp Kowani, which has a beach, and so we've got fees that are coming in. And we're on a very antiquated system right now. It's literally checks.
Yeah, Danny Berman, that was who... Yes.
So are you familiar with any other ways that we might be able to modernize some of that, you know?
Well, without, you know, going in and learning the system, and I know when we talked in the interview, like, with Eric and everything, he felt like the system, the way it is now, is... Works very well because of the size of the town.
Yeah.
I mean, you have systems out there, you know, the best one being Munis, very expensive. I mean, it is a good system, but it's very expensive. Softwrite, not so much. I've worked with CollectPro, so I've worked with different processes. I think whatever works best for that community and price tag, you know, you don't want to... Like, we're talking millions of dollars for Munis. And it's a... I've gone through, in Marshfield and Westboro right now, I'm going through conversions for Munis. It's a lot.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't say going in and changing what you have now right away. I mean, if it works, you know, it might be an old system, but it... The town is so small, I think it works for the town, and so...
I probably didn't structure my question the right way. So what I'm really asking, is there a way for us to... Specifically for Camp Kowani, is there a way for us to modernize the way that we're accepting payments from people that... So that we're not in some old little, you know, you've got to write a check, or you've got to go on Unipay and pay a dollar to do something that, you know, is actually more convenient for us, you know, that type of thing. Are you familiar with, you know...
Yes. So I... Unipay is actually working on trying to add like PayPal and Venmo, and that's what everybody's using.
Yeah.
So they actually are working on offering that. So that will be in, you know, so you have it already there, and they're offering... They're working on offering that to all the residents. So that, you know, if that's what you mean, like, that's a different type of...
That would be huge, yeah. Something a little more immediate.
Yes, and that's what people want. So you want to, you know, make that modernization. I totally agree, but they are working on it. I actually just talked to one of the representatives in Unipay last week about it.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Did anybody have any other questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion. Are we... We're entering into a contract. What's the period of time, and are we gonna...
So how we think we can structure this, because obviously, we can't have two treasurer collectors at the same time.
Right.
So I did speak with Eric, and what we can do is structure the time from December 18 to December 29 as a interim treasurer collector.
Okay.
All right, so we'll put together a... Basically, but it should be the interim for those two weeks, and then January 2, the interim will go away, and the contract will cover the two weeks as the interim, and then January 2. So similarly to what we did with the fire chief.
Okay. When's the board going to see the contract?
I will... I'm going to do... Put that together either tomorrow or Thursday. I will get it to Kate and hope to have it to the board by next... By the 14th.
Okay, so similar to the last vote that we just took, we're going to take a vote to empower you to negotiate on a contract. We will appoint her as the interim for that period of time and empower you to enter into ... To work on a contract that you'll present to us?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Accept.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you. We're thrilled. Thank you so much.
I am too.
Can't beat an 11-minute commute.
I know.
All right. We've got appoint Joyce Cameron to Maquon School Reuse Committee. Did anybody have an opportunity to speak to Ms. Cameron?
I have not had an opportunity to speak with her. She came into the office and submitted the application, but we can reach out to her and just ask if there's any conflicts that we need to worry... To be advised about, and then talk with her about... We will send the letter out, having her come in and be sworn in with the town clerk.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that anybody who's applying for the Maquon Reuse Committee, and we still have openings, is clear that it's a recommending committee. We're not going to actually make the decision on that committee. We'll come back to the Board of Selectmen and make a recommendation to the board, which the board will then decide what's going to go to town meeting and how we move forward. So I just want to make sure people are super clear about what the role for that committee is. So if you could weave that into that communication, that would be amazing. Okay, that brings us to Camp Kowani update. Ms. Green.
Okay. So are we motioning to accept her or to not wait?
We are waiting, because our protocol is that somebody from the office or one of us needs to have spoken to an applicant, and that was not done.
Can we vote to move forward, like, give Lisa the authority, the ability to meet with her and if everything goes well?
I don't think we're not under any gun, because we don't... It's not like we even have a meeting date set.
Yep.
And we still have openings, so if we were under the gun, I would probably consider taking that action, but I don't know, unless the rest of you guys think we should be doing that. What do other people think? What do you guys think?
No, I'm fine waiting.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so we're just gonna put a pin in it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so Camp Kowani update.
All right. So in your packets, we have a Camp Kowani update that was prepared by the Camp Kowani Chair, Frank Malisi, who is here with us. He has a PowerPoint up on the board, and with that being said, I will turn the update over to Mr. Malisi.
Thank you, Lisa. Hello. So last year, around the same time, I was here before giving you all an update about the camp and how the current status was. So I'm going to go through the slide. Before we go through the slides, I'm happy to report that we're in a lot better fiscal position than we were last year. Last year was a little steep. But yeah, so we can go through the fiscal year '23. If you have any questions, this is approved by the Camp Kowani Commission. We put this together with help from, you know, obviously, Dory and Eric and people like that. So if you have any questions, just shout them out to me in the middle of it, and I'll try to answer them the best I can. Can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So this is just going to start with our objective and mission. And since we changed our name from the Recreation Commission to the Camp Kowani Commission, our mission still is to stay the same, essentially. It's to provide a place for recreation for the town, where everybody can meet for, you know, recreation, cultural, athletic, and leisure time pursuits, you know, and kind of have the camp be a watering hole, if you will, for the town of Hanson.
This does still mention Recreation Department, Recreation Committee.
So there's a reason why, and because we have not approved new policies and procedures yet to come in front of the board. So it still is our... It still is our policies and procedures. Nothing has changed in that policies and procedures besides the actual name. So it's still accurate, but just any time you see Recreation Commission on that, just think of Camp Kowani Commission instead. And then we have also our unofficial mission statement is to provide excellent recreation for all residents of all ages within the town of Hanson, while maintaining the historical Camp Kowani for future generations. So go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So in fiscal year '22, our expenses were $95,000 for salary, $52,000 for operating expenses. We only brought in $66,000 worth of actual revenue. For fiscal year '23, we had our projected revenue was to bring in $184,453. I'm happy to report that for fiscal year '23, our salary expenses were about $115,000. Our operating expenses were about $53,000, and the total revenue that the camp brought in was $353,214. For fiscal year '24, our expected expenses will be $120,000 for salary. Operating expenses will be $100,000, and our projected revenue is close to $430,000.
Wow. That's amazing, Frank.
Go to the next slide, please. This is kind of a pie chart of what our total salary expenses are. You'll see the clerical staff and the camp staff take up a vast majority of that. The cove staff for fiscal year '23 was only $5,000 because of the May to end of June timeline, where we had those lifeguards there. On fiscal year '24, you'll see the cove staff is actually substantially higher, around $50,000, with camp staff being $76,000, the clerical staff being $55,000 as well. If you can go to the next slide, please. And these are breakdowns of the camp expenses, of what we have. A majority of our expenses for fiscal year '23 was the insurance and the building maintenance. Then we have utilities and maintenance and so on. Our operating budget had $113,000 worth of actual expense that went through. We had a total unspent expense of roughly $44,000, $45,000, so we rolled that over to the next fiscal year. Fiscal year '24, our total camp expenses are expected to be $150,000. That's including the ground maintenance and building maintenance for $64,000, insurance for $40,000, around $40,000, and utilities and maintenance and cove expenses as well. Any questions about that part at least?
Any questions, guys?
I think, kind of. So you might be talking about this in a second, but you're looking at camp... Camping going from $7,000 to $20,000. What are you... What are your plans to try to increase those things?
So we just raised the rates on our camping, and we also raised the rates on weddings going through and ordering all the campgrounds and then essentially using the whole campground. So camping, it's kind of weird how you can calculate the camping. You can calculate the camping by strictly people coming in and requesting to camp, or you can come in people with weddings, saying, I want a wedding, plus I want a camp, right? So there's two different ways of doing it. So last year, for fiscal year '23, we kind of did it more of like, if you're in a wedding and you'd like to camp, then this would go towards the wedding revenue that you have there. If you go to the next slide, sorry. Some people don't want to talk about the wedding revenue. And then kind of individual camping would come in at the $7,000 on the top. We need to kind of get a better handle on that, so what we're going to do is we're going to actually take the camping revenue out of the wedding revenue on the fiscal year '24 and count it as its own in there. So that's how you see the discrepancy. And also, we're going to have less weddings probably in the next year or so than we had in the past, but we'll make up that money by actually our raised rates, because a lot of the rates for fiscal year '23 was actually some of the old rates as well, that were the $5,500. the $5,500. Now, um, we're up to $8,500 for, or, I'm sorry, $8,000 for weddings, and we just approved a rate increase to $8,500 for weddings plus additional rate increases, so.
Now, on the fee increases, um, have you passed those by this board yet?
Not yet, because, um, we're still waiting on one more fee that's going to get, um, voted in our December meeting, and then we'll have it to you in one of your December meetings. Yep, and you'll have the policies and procedures in the same time, but the old fees of the $8,000 have been approved by the board.
Okay.
Um, and then, again, tell me if I'm jumping the gun here, um, because I can wait, but where do you attribute the, the revenue increase? Where do you attribute that to? Where's the success? What has been successful for you?
Um, so, a couple things. So first thing is, is we're doing a lot of work at the camp, and we, um, have been doing a lot of work with, um, nonprofits and town organizations, mostly town organizations that are coming in and asking us for a discounted rate, and we give them that discounted rate. I think that goes a long way in having the townspeople come to the camp and say, "Oh my God, this place is beautiful. I want to rent here for a wedding," or something like that. Plus, you know, we, we, with the cove being reopened this year and everything like that, we had a lot of people at the camp this year, not just for weddings, but most of the weddings that were coming from COVID were still, you know, kind of faded out in the first half of '23, I'll say. But, um, from what I understand, and then, you know, on the second half of more fiscal year '24, which is kind of where we're in right now, um, those were all new bookings from last year, and they came and saw the camp. And even to this day, there was a tour that was there yesterday, and they said, "This place is so cheap." Even at the $8,000 that we were charging them, they were like, "This place is still so cheap." Because, you know, one of the things is, you know, you can go find a venue that might cost you $6,000, but they require you to buy your own food. Um, they have usually a minimum on alcohol, they have a minimum on food, they, they charge you ceremony fees up to wazoo. So after you're all said and done, um, that $6,000 venue might actually end up costing you $25,000. At the camp, we charge you $8,000, you bring in your own food, you, you can, you have your own caterer, they, you control everything from the wedding except for the venue, that's, that's the one charge that you have that you know. So if you want to go, you know, have a really nice venue, go a little bit cheaper on the food, and you spend, you know, $12,000 all in, that's your prerogative, right? Um, you know, we, we don't, we really open up the, the wedding to really be whatever it wants to be, and we're not putting constraints on, you know, you have to use this food, you have to use, the only thing you have to use is our bartender, as far as we're concerned, because we have a contract with them, so.
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem. If you can go to the next slide, please.
Uh, Frank, is there any thought of trying to market us to things for, and again, if I'm jumping the gun, um, you know, in the presentation, but, um, marketing us, uh, you know, the camp to, uh, corporate entities for, you know, like, um, maybe planning sessions or parties or whatever?
So that's a really good point. I, uh, talked to Dory yesterday, and we went over a list of all the, all the businesses that are listed in, um, Hanson, and we are going to send out a flyer to them about holiday parties that they can have on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, something like that, and then we can keep that list and keep sending it every year if we want to, just to advertise that, because, uh, we have a lot of, and, and just so everybody's aware, I'm going to say this multiple times, Hanson residents get a 20% discount, and veterans get an additional 10% discount on top of that. So at the last meeting when we approved those rate increases, we actually increased the Hanson discount rate to 25%, and we made the veteran rate stackable by an additional 10%. So that's 35% off if you're, if you're a veteran in Hanson that wants to rent the camp, the lodge, and that goes for anything that happens at the camp. So, um, you know, as, as a business in Hanson, you also have the opportunity, if you're running just a party, now if it's a business workshop or something like that, it's a different rate entirely, but you also have the opportunity to take advantage of that discount. So while we're increasing the rate for people who are coming outside, coming into the camp, it's actually funny, we're not increasing the rate nearly as much. It's still, I think, over the past two rate increases, the, the, the rate for a Hanson resident to actually rent the camp has only gone up 50 bucks, but we've raised the rate, um, to, I think it was about, the last rate increase that we did was, I think, $700 to rent the hall for five hours, and it's only, or Hanson resident can rent it for, I think, $525 or $550.
Wow, that's a bargain. That's amazing, yeah.
And that's, and that's exactly what people have been telling us. They said, even at $700, they're like, "This is so cheap," because it's beautiful over there, and, you know, we do a lot of work there, so. Did that answer your question?
It, it does answer my question. I'm also wondering, Ms. Green, whether we ought to, um, see if we can connect with Metro Chamber, um, of Commerce and see if, um, we can somehow get the word out that we've got a venue that people can rent to, because that's a huge constituency.
And I'm happy to report that our December dates are actually, usually before in the past, December dates were hard to fill. There was one point in time when I was on the commission that I remember, we were like, "Should we slash the rates in half just to kind of book December rates?"
Yeah.
We're, we're booking December rates.
That's awesome.
And not only that, we're booking February rates and March rates and things like that. The camp is exploding. It's, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for the town, and it's been a real, um, it's been a real treat to see it go from where it was to where it is now, so. And we're going to get through, into some of that, um, project base later, uh, in a couple more slides. It's not too many more to go, so.
Okay.
Um, for the events in fiscal year '23, I'm sorry, that title's actually wrong, fiscal year '24 and '25, I should say. For fiscal year '24, we have 45 wedding bookings and 63 events booked. So 45 weddings either are, um, are already going to, already have happened for fiscal year '24 are going to happen at the end of fiscal year '24 next year. And fiscal year '25, we already have 13 weddings booked and 52 events booked. Events can be anything from a birthday party to a, a shop or a, a fair or something like that that's going on, so.
Do you have targets that you try to hit, for like wedding bookings and things like that?
Nope.
No?
Nope, we haven't, we haven't really done any advertising this year, um, in terms of wedding bookings. It's essentially been word of mouth, so.
Just curious.
Um, can you go to the next slide? Oh yeah, thank you. So, um, fiscal year '23, '24, what have we done at the camp? Projects are completed. So we got new mattresses for the whole camp, that was approximately $16,000. Um, we had Eagle Construction build a new electric cabin in the south end campground. We had landscaping finished in the front of the lodge, if, if any of you guys have seen that. Um, the Cranberry Cove Beach program was the first season since COVID opened, and we only lost $10,000 in the whole program, which I was expecting to lose closer to 20 or 30, for my projections, or thankfully, they were wrong. Um, and stormwater management, landscaping redesign of the cove. Um, that's, that's a very important one, I'm going to get to that in another slide. Um, and then we also, uh, completed the boathouse roof, and then we're going to be doing the structural inside of the boathouse as well in the next coming weeks, we're getting a quote for that. So the boathouse near the corner, brand-new metal roof on it, because kids were going in there ripping off shingles, throwing them in the, throwing them in the lake, so we've got a brand-new metal roof on it, and we're doing the structural on the inside right now. So, um, this is, two pictures of the, uh, the new Cranberry Cove, I'll call it. So on the bottom, um, you see that the, um, the, the new entrance, you see the mulch barriers that are there to help the stormwater management, and you also see the, the grass and the trees that have been planted on the actual cove. There's been a little bit of controversy about this, because we're taking away some of the, uh, some of the sand. I understand that, but this was done for a particular reason. This was done for stormwater management. That sand, when it was all the way back towards the, towards the end of the fence, um, water would go in there, it would rip through the middle of the, of the, of the, uh, cove, and it would make huge craters, sand would be going into the, into the water. Um, we had sand loss one year, we had all kinds of crazy stuff. So with, um, in conjunction with the Conservation Commission, um, who are wonderful help in this, this is the design that, that we, uh, we, we implemented at the cove. Um, it's, um, it's going to be really cool when, uh, next year, when we get through and those trees are going to bloom, it's going to look really nice, we're going to get nice pictting tables out there and everything like that, so.
It looks beautiful.
So this is just, uh, highlighting some of the stormwater management that we did in the cove as well. So you can see the retention basin there, it was actually enlarged, um, by a significant amount, um, and then you see kind of the, the, um, I don't know what it's called there, but if Roger was here, he would slap me in the back of the head and tell me what it is, but I, I can't tell you, so. But we also plan to do trees on the outside as well, so those trees can kind of have some more natural shade, kind of replacing the trees that were, excuse me, used to be there, but no longer there. And, okay, and that's the new electric cabin on the bottom, and the new boathouse roof right on the top. Um, the electric cabin, it has all-new bunk beds in it, brand-new bunks, it has a ramp there. I'm not going to tell you it's ADA accessible, but it has a new ramp there. Um, and then there's all-electric on the inside, that's been one of our most popular cabins that people have been renting out. There's a different rate to rent out the electric cab, uh, uh, the election cabin, the elec, the electric cabin as well, compared to the other, uh, cabins that have, don't have electric in it, but, um, and then the last slide, please. So, um, just a, just a real quick, special thanks to the Select Board for the $50,000 in upper money that you guys approved for stormwater management at the camp. Um, the Community Preservation Committee for approving $25,000 in the cove landscaping, um, the Conservation Commission, um, who worked with the camp, um, on the cove landscaping approval, they've been instrumental from Phil to Frank to Lon to everybody like that who've worked with Roger and everything, they were awesome. Um, Ed Sheehan Landscaping did the, did the cove. Um, Rep Cutler and Senator Brady, um, I sent them an email earlier in the year before the budget process started, they were able to secure, uh, $23,500 in the state budget for the cove specifically, so we can do other things there, whether it's rebuilding the cove house or anything like that. Um, then the camp staff, everybody here knows the staff of the camp, they're fantastic. Um, they've done a lot of work this year, um, and then the Camp Kwani Commission, obviously, so, um, they've been doing a great job. Um, and we got a couple more projects coming up for next year, but I'll leave that until they're done.
And, in your typical extremely humble way, and you, uh, for your leadership and your, um, stick-to-it-ness and your vision, um, and your collaboration, um, so we thank you for all of that as well.
There's no problem. Does anybody have any questions?
No, good work.
I mean, I suppose.
I mean, what a difference. What a difference a couple years makes, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I, that, Jim Hickey was sitting right there last year when he was talking about the cove, and I told him, I was like, "The cove will be open next year in some form or fashion." So we had a whole crew of lifeguards, we had a whole crew of, um, we had the beach coordinator down there, um, it was, it was great, and we had no problems, and we only lost $10,000, which seems like a lot of money. It is, but it's not a lot of money when you're talking about the only swimming hole in Hanson that people get to use, right? And there's going to be future plans for the cove coming up, hopefully next town meeting, where we can kind of enhance the recreation ability of citizens of the town, so I'm, I'm super excited.
Good for you.
And, and one thing I just wanted to know is, the gentleman who actually installed the metal roof on the boathouse ended up booking the camp, uh, the lodge for his wedding.
You're kidding me?
No, and he's from Hanson, so.
Um, and, and that, that's, that's eagle roofing, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
No, um, 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 Rever, Revered.
Oh, Revered, yes, I'm sorry, eagle did the, the electric cabin, so, so yeah. And so we have, we have a, we have a hearty list of contractors that we use over there, and, um, I'm happy to say that a vast majority of them are, are in Hanson or local.
That's awesome.
That's important, that's important to me personally on the committee, and that's important with the commission, so.
To the extent possible.
That's why Ed Sheehan down the road, he was the obvious choice, and he, he came in and he did an absolutely bang-up job over there, everything he does at the camp, so, um, really excited. For the past year that we've done, um, it's going to be even better in the future, and, um, I appreciate everybody's, uh, help and, uh, let me, let me kind of go and figure out what, what to do over there, so, thank you.
The future's looking bright, huh?
Uh, maybe.
We like it.
Depends on the day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um, we, next up, we've got fireworks site discussion, Ms. Green.
Um, yes, so to give an update on the fireworks site discussion, um, when the EPA and DEP were here, um, back in September, perhaps, uh, they provided a, a presentation to the board, and they had talked about, um, having a forum, a community forum, which the, um, three communities of Hanover, Hanson, and Pembroke, they would have a, um, an information e, uh, forum for residents. Uh, been working with Hanover to try and get this scheduled. Uh, we were narrowing in on a date, um, in December that, for, to have the forum in Hanson, I mean, Hanover. Unfortunately, we just got an email from the EPA, um, that due to some timing issues and conflicts, they have to move the community meeting to January. So we don't have a date yet in January, we are working on this. Um, Hanover is still, um, pinpointed to have the forum, but I also asked the question if there could be another night to have a second forum, possibly in Hanson, for people who could not make the first one. Um, so we are still working on that.
Well, Ms. Green told me that it was going to be in Hanover, and I said, "And here we go again." I think that, that was, were we not clear with the folks that were here before, that we want to have a seat at the table, that Hanson needs to be taken seriously, that Hanover's been driving the bus the whole time? And so Ms. Green did reach out, Hanover was rather, um, uh, we'll say reluctant, non-cooperative maybe, um, in, in having the forum in Hanson, and insisted on having it in Hanover. So I asked her to bring it before the board, because I thought, perhaps it was just me that felt extremely strongly about this, and perhaps you guys would say, "Hey, what's the big deal? Let's just have it in, in Hanover." But I just thought, okay, all right, okay, all right, okay.
Right there with you.
All right, okay.
Can we take the reins and just say, "We'll schedule a time in January"?
We can have a separate one, but Hanover's going ahead with what they want.
Well, they can do it on their own.
Yep, yep. We can have a separate, which we've done before. Years ago, Hanover had one, and then we had a separate one. Uh, but I really thought it would be nice to show a partnership and collaboration. You've driven the bus this, now just hand the wheel over to us for a little while, we'll drive, we can keep going back and forth like that. But clearly, that's not, that was a little bit overly optimistic on my part, and I can be Pollyanna at times, so, um, I think what I'm hearing from the board is we want our own session, which would be more than glad to invite Pembroke and Hanover to if they'd like to come here.
Yeah, I was going, that's what I was going to suggest, is to invite the other towns.
We still want to show a united front, the EPA and the DEP. Um, but again, the one night that they, that worked for E, the EPA, the DEP, um, may not work for officials and residents, so having a second one in Hanson hopefully would kind of fill the need for the all-towns, um, so.
You're being extremely diplomatic, Ms. Green. Yes, Mr. Weeks?
Um, we, we had seen, well, we had that last conversation with, um, DEP and the EPA. Um, I, I thought, we were all on the same page, that we were trying to not only be as collaborative and inclusive as possible with the, with those two particular towns, but other towns that might not have been considered that also wanted to have a voice. Is there any way that we can make reference to the meeting that we had discussed with them? Um, talk about their agreement with us, that we should have a more, um, prominent seat, more prominent voice, um, and just put that in writing, you know, with our signature on that, to say, "This is what the town is requesting based on the, on the meeting and the conversations of that day." And, and instead of asking, just say, you know, "We're, we're really going to want to make this happen." Um, we're, as elected officials and as the town administrator, we're, we're asking and making the request that this happens, and you include more than just a couple of towns. Um, other folks that don't even have a seat at the table, we've made it pretty clear that a lot of this stuff may affect them as well, and it, all this is not going to be new news to them, so I think, writing it down and submitting it that way, to me, makes no sense.
I think that's a great idea. I love it, so. What do you guys think? Maybe you didn't hear us, but we'll put it in writing. Different people learn different ways, so, um, perhaps you're not an auditory learner, so we'll put it in writing to you. What do you guys think? Yeah?
I, I just had a, the.
Agree? Yeah.
A similar, just, um, it was mentioned that we write letters to, to the governor, and I don't know if everybody has, has taken the opportunity to do that, but we need to really push the governor at the same time as the DEP, and, you know, we're going to get her moving on this also. I'm not sure if we've heard anything from, from that, like what.
Well, could, could we work on, work on crafting a letter to the governor?
Yeah, so I think, you know, we're, we're trying to get that first step of, of the community meeting. Um, we're, we're trying to get that scheduled, and then we can, we can work on the letter, and I'll ask the EPA if they could just, um, provide us with a, um, recapitulation of our meeting in, in writing, and then go from there. Um, and again, we want, we definitely, we want to show them a united front, but at the same time, we want to show them that.
I don't think it's us that's having trouble showing the united front.
Yeah.
You can only reach out the olive branch so many times and have it snapped and slapped back in your face, when at some point you have to say, "Apparently, collaboration is not part of the game here." And I mean, uh, you're the one who spoke to the town administrator, I don't know if it's a town manager or town.
Town manager, Hanson, uh, Hanover.
In Hanover and I believe that you said there was quite a digging in on not moving it to Hanson.
Correct.
Okay, so, we're getting a strong message. Um, I, I'm more than glad to reach out to the Chair of Hanover Select Board if you want. Uh, we could do it mano a mano, um, and I could reach out and say, look, you know, I had our town, you know, our board asked our town administrator to reach out to your person. We were getting a feeling that there wasn't that collaboration. We're really asking one more time with feeling. We know you've been taking the lead, but now it's starting to get really into our backyard and we really want to have more of a, of an equal role than we've had and, and I can feel it out if you guys want. I don't think it's going to hurt.
I would definitely back that.
Okay, I, I don't think it will hurt. I mean, worst case scenario, they laugh in my face, hang up on, on me or whatever and wouldn't be the first time, so, um, okay.
So, we'll, we'll continue to work on this and see what we can, what we can pull together and.
But I think to Mr. Weeks's point, um, Hanover can only take the lead if the DEP lets them.
Right. That's why I, I mean, I think it's.
I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah, because I think that at the end of the day, we, we have a lot of agreements with surrounding towns and we have a lot of partnerships and situations with a lot of surrounding towns and I, and I always feel like we're, we're, um, we're, we're, we're at the table, but we're, we're not, it's not equal seats. And you can see variations of this throughout different, different agreements. And I think, you know, we can, we can start leading and then have, inviting them to come to us in a lot of these things. So, I, I'd like to, you know, Hanson to start getting in the habit of saying, we're going to have this meeting on this day. You're more than welcome to join us.
Yes.
If you guys want to go over there and do whatever you're doing, that's fine, but we're, we're doing this thing, whatever this is. And I just think there's a polite way to do that without saying, we're not excluding you and we're not doing this because we, we think there's some weird relationship. It's just, we're going to start, we're going to initiate this event or this thing on our own from now on and you're welcome. Here's the invitation, show up if you'd like to go. You know, I think that that's, I think where we should start going.
I agree, we're just establishing what our needs and boundaries are and I don't see how anybody can argue with that.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I think we've got agreement that we'd like a letter to the DEP and then I'll, um, try to reach out. And if you hear a primal scream, you'll know it didn't go well.
Fingers crossed.
Um, and then you're going to just try to work on establishing our own, um, separate community meeting.
Yes.
Which all are welcome to attend.
Right.
Um, okay, great. Um, guys, I know we've got, um, Dr. Skeliger and Gilmat, our health agent, did you guys want to chime in on anything?
I'd just like to say that it's, uh, very important that you not exclude yourselves from their meeting.
Right, I was thinking the same thing.
That you understand that Hanson should go over there and say it's, it's case as well as having a meeting.
Oh, absolutely. I, I plan on going to the Hanover one and I'm sure the rest of the board probably does too, to, yeah, but excellent point, yeah. Um, and, and there may be questions that are raised at that, you know, because that town's been more invested on a more regular basis. They, I think they probably have more citizens that have been following this more closely than we probably have. We're kind of a little bit late on, you know, not that, it's not anybody's fault, it's just, you know, um, we're a little, little late to the game. Um, so I think we may, I know when I went to the forum that they had pre-COVID, I don't even remember what year it was. Um, they, they were asking questions, I was like, I don't even, like, they were up here and we, I was here and that's just me personally as far as knowledge, but I learned quite a bit. Um, and I think we could learn from what questions are asked there. We may ask different questions because we're in a different place, we've got different things. But, Mr. Matto, did you have anything? I, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm very sorry, I was having a hard time. I don't think it joined me.
Okay.
Maybe plans out for, but definitely Hanson, we are on its own. I mean, Hanson, we've got to stand up and talk about this.
Okay.
You know, we've got a lot that's going to come down, come down the pipeline in the next few years, so we're going to make us stand.
And, and we've got to get our folks educated, right? Because we need to get the word out, we've got to get people in town, you know, educated about what we're dealing with. And like I said, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but we'll get there, but, you know, um, so, well, I appreciate all the time you guys have been putting in on this. I know there's lots of calls that we don't even talk about, that you guys are attending and, you know, participating. And so, we, we appreciate you having our backs on that. Um, anything else on that, you guys? Okay, all right, well, then that winds up our fireworks site discussion. Um, thanks, guys. Um, feel free to hang around if you want to listen to our IT surplus phone discussion or whatever else we're talking about. Okay, um, all right, next up would be surplus phones with IT department. Mr. Moberg, thank you for your patience, we appreciate it. It's lovely to see you this evening.
How was everyone doing? All right, how were you?
So, lay it up for us, Mr. Moberg.
Well, we recently replaced the phone system here in the town hall. So, we have about 26 phones up for surplus. Uh, they're no use to us at the moment. We also replaced the phones over at the library senior center. Uh, so we have about six phones and two cordless from there, so we're going to put those up for surplus.
And, um, are we, eventually, everybody's going to be on this system, right? All right, um, I'm just hearing nothing but rave reviews from everybody up at town hall that we don't have the weird static, we don't have wrong names, blah, 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 fill in all of the various complaints that we had. It's very clear, crystal clear reception, easily transferred, everybody's name is in the right place, so good work on that. Um, all right, so what kind of, um, I mean, what could we possibly be looking at for, you know, getting in return for selling these? If we just declare them surplus?
That's something I'll have to look into, I haven't really researched what these particular phones are going for.
But we don't have a use for them anymore, okay, all right.
Did you arrange this picture from Christmas tree form?
I did, just for you.
Yeah?
I was trying to get them all.
Very holiday, very holiday spirit, I like that.
It is, all that's missing is a little angel at the top or something.
Need like a cellphone to top that, as a tree top or something.
There is a use for them, I guess.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
This is easy.
So, um, do we just need a motion to declare the, um, 26 Avaya phones from town hall, six Avaya phones from the library and two cordless phones, um, from the library as surplus?
Yes, and, um, what we can do is we can, we can auction them off. We can put them either on municipal bid or international auctions that work with municipalities on auctioning off surplus equipment. So, the motion, um, would include allowing me to auction these off.
Okay, I will entertain that motion.
Sold.
Set it.
Okay, any further discussion?
There's no personal data on these phones, no, nothing, it's all just, okay, no storage on them.
Okay.
Okay, um, all right, well, without any further discussion, then I, um, we'll take a vote, um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Moberg.
You're welcome.
And we look forward to hearing from you sometime soon on an IT update.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You guys, uh, you guys care?
Yeah.
That's up next.
Yeah.
Oh, great point. Um, okay, secure alarm proposal discussion, Mr. Moberg, thank you for sticking with us.
Yeah. So, I, I kind of just saw this today, and to be quite honest with you, this, um, this quote that we received from Secure Alarm. Uh, I kind of went over it and in the past, I had already looked into getting panic alarms and, um, I have a quote from that vendor, which is what we currently use for cameras.
Okay.
So, there's a couple of options on the, uh, other vendor's side. Uh, I haven't got, I just got this quote two hours ago.
So, do you, do you want us to postpone this conversation?
Yeah.
Give you a little time to noodle it, we could put it on our next agenda if that would work better for you.
Yeah, that way I can give a little bit more content to it.
Okay, no problem. Yep, all right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Um, so, ladies, if we could, um, make sure we put that in the parking lot for one of our future meetings and just check in with him on, on when he's ready to discuss it. Um, all right, well, that brings us to our FY25 budget discussion. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Kincherf, it's so timely. Um, okay, Ms. Green, Mr. Kincherf, who's taking the lead here?
Well, I'll, I'll lead us into it. Um, so it's that time of year, um, we're fresh out of October special town meeting and, um, quickly approaching May town meeting already. Um, we have a memorandum ready to go, to be, um, sent out to all of the departments tomorrow um, to let them know that the budgeting season and cycle is officially opened. Uh, we have December 1st, Friday, December 1st is a budget submission. Um, basically for right now, um, we are asking everybody to level fund their departments, uh, taking into consideration any, um, financial obligations due to CBA, uh, CBA agreements. Um, we've already provided, I've already provided our department heads through department head meeting with what we have for a balance in our free cash and have asked them to please go light on, um, use of free cash and request of free cash. Um, I have reached out to Superintendent Simonak to see if we could schedule a meeting. Um, I do know that he has, does have, um, did receive his numbers for enrollment, uh, but he hasn't had, got, had them certified yet. So, he's still waiting on those and he anticipates getting those, the certification on that, um, Friday, November 10th.
Okay.
Um, so, we've reached out and we want to begin that conversation. Um, I remember the joint meeting that we had with them probably, um, almost two years ago, that he did say that he receives his enrollment numbers in October. So, this is a good time to start the conversations on, you know, their assessments and their budgets and things. Um, so with that said, I will turn it over to, um, Mr. Kincherf, um, our town accountant.
So.
Uh, to bring us into the, uh, the dollar figures.
Yeah, so, the, the fun stuff. So, um, so, what I picture, if you remember last year's budget cycle, I think it's going to be similar. Like similar budget cycle, we kind of did some projections of how we think the budget's going to come in. Um, with, you know, you guys hired John Madden to do a Madden report and, um, luckily, he lives kind of right next door to my office, so he comes down, when he goes to the barb shop, he comes in.
I'm getting a visit.
He's looking good, you know, but we go over this stuff here. So, um, like, right now, like preliminarily, we're looking at like 1.2 million, but this is, let's just see how the budgets come in, see what they look like, you know, do the, you know, forecast and so forth. But I think it's going to be like the same type of thing. The only thing this year, um, we're able to, um, grab some opera funds, which was kind of nice because we swapped out free cash for opera type of thing. So, that might not be available to the degree that it was last year. The only thing that we could do is, there's some money, um, that was appropriate for, um, opera funds for other projects that may not come to fruition, so we could reallocate that. So, I think it's just like, um, you know, you know, communication, get the information in and, yeah, put our seat belts on.
And have we scrubbed through all of the various articles where we've allocated money, but it hasn't been spent? Or we've gotten, um, for instance, I'm thinking of several of the, um, pieces of, uh, property that we've acquired, uh, for conservation where it was grant money, but it was reimbursable, so we had to front the money and then we were going to get reimbursed?
No, this, um, we started, there's a couple little pockets of money. Um, one is, I know there's definitely 84,000 in school articles that can be re-appropriated. And then, you probably, I was looking at the books today, there's like $265,000 in a sale of land account that can be appropriated for any project that you could actually borrow for. So, if push came to shove and needed a little extra money for capital projects, so we're in the process of trying to find these little pockets.
Okay.
Pockets of money.
That's, that's good.
Yeah.
So, this is worst case scenario, we might have some little.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, Mr. Weeks, anything?
No, no, it's great.
Mr. Hill? You guys all okay on this?
Too early, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, it's, it seems shocking that we're doing, doing it this early, but we need to.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
And since we're sort of talking about shockingly early, um, what type of, um, what, what's your thought process on deadlines for May town meeting? In terms of submitting articles, are we looking at early March or what are we looking at?
Yeah, so, um, let's see, I think we have that scheduled.
Oh, that's probably in our town calendar.
Yes.
Oh, on the, on the last page of the budget.
Oh, it's on the budget there?
Oh, it's, it's, yeah, in the memorandum.
Okay.
No, damn it.
Annual special town meetings.
Deadline for submission of annual town meeting.
Yeah.
February 8th.
Am I messing up?
Oh, wow, okay.
On the very last page here.
Yes. Budget calendar.
Yeah.
Wow, February 8th, okay, we're not, we're not messing around, okay.
I think it's smart right now, though, I mean, we can always, we can always adjust it.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
It is adjustable, I, I did use from last year.
Yeah.
But I, I figured, let's, let's try to work to a deadline and we can move it if we need to.
This is really smart. I, I just think that, um, it's too early to make any judgments because we don't have any budgets yet. But in terms of the timeline, I think it's, it's urgent enough, I think it's great.
I love it.
Very well thought.
And, and one thing too, um, we also have all our union, union contracts that are going to be up for negotiation. Um, so it's going to be a little tricky with the budgets this year because we have not begun negotiations yet. So, we're really going to be kind of looking at a crystal ball to see, as of June, July 1, what new CBA obligations that we will have to fulfill. Um, so, we'll do our best to work with it.
Okay.
Yeah?
All right, great.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you very much.
Aye.
Okay, um, and that brings us to review proposed select board calendar. Ms. Green?
Okay, yes, so, um, wow, we are quickly approaching the end of 2023, calendar year 2023, who could believe it? Um, Thanksgiving is in two weeks. Um, so we have before you our select board meeting calendar for the year 2024 to 2025. Um, basically, uh, the, 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 the dates pretty much stay the same, we just update them to the, the correct year in dates. But we have, um, all of our department updates, Elder Feers Library, um, we have our strategic planning sessions in here, uh, the warrant closing, the warrant opening, uh, town meeting and then planning. So, so basically, this is just a continuation of people knowing when our meetings are for 2024, the year 2024 and the very beginning of 2025. And of course, these can always be adjusted as need be.
Okay.
The biggest adds, we're adding the strategic planning sessions on the calendar
and adding a few more wage and personnel meetings, so we can make sure that they're covered for, um, any articles that we're placing in. All right. Okay, so, at the last strategic planning session, we had discussed, and it could, maybe we call that our strategic planning session, but basically reviewing the strategic plan as a board, not with a larger group, figuring out how much progress we've made, recalibrating and figuring out what the priorities are, if they're the same or if they're different. Um, and I'm fine with doing that in March if we think that that's when we want to do it. Um, but it will be different, we, 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 we don't need to do it at Camp Quanti, we can just do it here.
Would it be just a line item on our agenda or would it be longer than that?
Uh, it probably, I mean, yeah, will probably just be a line item on the agenda, but probably take like maybe half an hour, 45 minutes or something. It would take up a good chunk of the meeting, but I don't think it's going to be the whole meeting, so. Um, did anybody have any concerns with any of these dates or?
I'm glad to see we did stay away from New Year's Day, the next day.
Um, here you say warrant articles that are due in March as opposed to the February, but, yeah.
I know, I noticed that too afterwards.
So, you may want to make that little change just so we're consistent?
Yeah.
And there's no confusion with everybody up at town hall. Um, and then just, um, I think we could vote on this at the next meeting, just clean it up, you know, whatever other little things, um, that you think. Um, maybe you may want to pass it by, um, our town clerk to see if she's got any dates that we need to keep in mind, that we should be mindful of.
Yeah, so what we'll do tomorrow, actually, this, 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 um, schedule will go out to all the departments so that they can review it and then bring anything to our attention that we.
That's perfect, and then we'll vote on it.
Might have missed or we need to add or town clerk with some spec, you know, specific dates that she needs, so.
All right, so, um, can we plan on voting on this at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, and then that brings us to review proposed 2024 private way plow list. Ms. Green?
So, the plow, the, um, the plow list is something that is done every year. Um, it, it includes the private ways, um, that the highway department does plow specifically for, um, emergency services, fire and, and police, to make sure that they, they can access any of the residents on those private roads. Um, basically, this year, um, if you'll notice that some of the roads that are not here are some of the roads that were recently, um, voted to become public roads, so.
And just to be clear, you're still getting plowed, you're just not considered a private road.
That's right, they're still being plowed, yes, but they're not, they're no longer on the private plow, way plow list. And then we, um, we will submit this to highway to let them know that the board has voted to allow plowing on that, those roads.
Did anybody have any questions about this list?
I just have the one about Pine Grove Colony. I'm assuming that's Pine Grove Avenue and all the roads off of it. The reason I ask is I live on Pine Grove Avenue.
I've never heard of it referred to as Pine Grove Colony.
Neither have I.
It sounds quite, quite tony.
It doesn't it?
Yes.
Um, and we don't have a private way sign on Pine Grove, Pine Grove Avenue.
I noticed that when I drove by the other day, was there ever one?
Did you steal it? There was for about a week or two?
Yes, I believe somebody probably removed it. No, I personally did not steal it, I assure you.
We did have one for a couple of weeks and then it was taken down and I'm not sure if it was officially taken down or.
There was some high jinks around some of the signs, I've heard. You may want to let, um, you know, yes, it's prominently displayed in my living room. I, I, a whole bunch of, uh, signs, yeah.
Taking about the stop sign.
Yep, exactly, stop signs, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, but I'm assuming that means that whole, I'm sorry, I'm assuming that means that whole area around Pine Grove Avenue.
And also, removing the sign private way does not change whether it's a private way or not. Sorry, Ms. Green.
I'll put it back up.
So, um, yeah, Ms. Green, you may want to just verify, but I don't know of any other Pine Grove.
Yeah, we, we can confirm that with, with, um, the, the highway director. Um, this is the same list that, that basically.
He put it together, right?
Yes, yes, so, if, if it's been plowed in the, in the past, then the, the same thing will continue for this winter.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the private, um, way plow list as presented to us this evening.
Sold.
Set.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so everybody on the private ways getting plowed again this year, um, by our highway department. All right, great, um, that brings us to strategic planning recap and next up, Ms. Green.
Okay, so, um, we did have our strategic plan, um, follow-up from the initial strategic plan. Uh, the topics that were focused on at this particular, um, updated were the, I, communication, um, through IT, we looked at town-owned properties, um, and.
We looked at town properties.
Other things.
The other. Communication.
We did the communication where we focused on the, like, the IT capabilities.
Yep.
The phone system, we looked at.
Internal communication, external communication.
Yes.
And then town-owned properties and.
Town-owned properties and.
Optimizing, uh, revenue from them and then fixing them up, that was everything that we covered.
Wasn't there a third subject?
Nope, those were the three, internal, external communication, they were separated.
Yes, um, so we, we had a very good, we had a very good meeting, we had very good turnout, um, a lot of great ideas, a lot of new focuses, um, with the strategic planning. And it, we're, we're actually making, we're making strides, we're really moving forward on some of the. We're really moving forward on some of the areas that we looked at. As far as the communication, from where we are, we are way ahead from where we were as far as our social media platforms, we now have with the newsletters, with the updated phone system. So we really are making very good progress in both external and internal communication. There's still a ways to go for improvement, but.
You know, but I can see that we're trying on a number of different levels to engage people, and I think people are seeing that. Somebody had suggested to me, and I think it's a pretty good suggestion, that we think about maybe once a month having a department head give an update to the express, similar to what the schools do, about like what they're kind of working on. And it may be that you take a piece of that newsletter that you've already worked on that features somebody anyway and kind of pull that chunk out and send it to the express. Think about it, you know.
No, absolutely, yep.
You know, that would be good visibility for the department heads who are doing great work all the time, people just don't necessarily know what they're doing because they don't have time to stop and tell everybody about it. So if we've already got a forum and we're already communicating it in one way, we might be able to leverage that.
With the addition of me, with Lynn in the office, and now with Emily, who really is focusing on the social media and the communication, again, it's going to be continuous, good movement progress as far as our communication, both internal and external. The town-owned properties, there's a lot of different ideas, and Tony DeFrayis is working with a lot of what we can do with town-owned properties, looking at the possibilities of development, working to get grants that allow us to do planning, do site readiness, which means all the permitting would be all set, zoning would be taken care of. So when we, if somebody's interested in a town-owned property to purchase it, all of that is done, all the permitting is done.
Yes.
So basically, it's almost shovel-ready for them.
And the town can get more money for that property.
Yes.
Because it's not somebody taking the risk, gee, will the town approve this? Will I be allowed to build on it? They already know when they purchase that property that all the permitting's in place.
Exactly, exactly. They know exactly what the zoning will be, they know exactly what they can put there. So those grants that we've received are going to help the town in that direction.
That's awesome. Speaking of town-owned properties, it may be time for us to take a look at what we've had for tax takings, and it seems like it's been a minute, but that just might be my perception, I don't, you know, since we've sold any of, any properties that had a tax taking, so if you don't mind just taking a look at that, I think it would be helpful.
Yes, and I think there's a little bit of a slowdown with it because of the new court case that's out there that's still before the court regarding the proceeds, once a tax taking is auctioned off, there's a court case out there that hasn't been decided, I don't believe, as yet, as to when a town sells a property through an auction, through a tax title, the town keeps all the proceeds, but the court is looking at whether that is legal or not. So basically, I believe we can recoup what was owed in taxes, but the rest of the proceeds now need to be turned over to who was the owner of the property. So that's a court case that's out there right now, so I don't know if we move forward with any selling of the property, if we might be in a standstill while we wait for that court case.
Okay, fair enough, I didn't know that, so obviously we don't want to be.
Just a little update on that, yep, so that's probably why there's a little slowdown.
That's awesome. Okay, did anybody have anything else on strategic planning? I did want to mention, there's been quite a bit of controversy about, I really hate to say it because this will just continue the controversy, but about the bear, formerly known as Pumpkin, and I'm not saying formerly because it's deceased, I'm saying because people have suggested perhaps the bear should not have been named, and that is being taken under consideration. But Chief Mix, first and foremost, I want to say that we have first responders who are experts, they are professionals in the job that they do. And the Police Department is one of those groups. We hire them for their expertise, and we hire them to do a job. And at some point, we need to defer to those experts, that they have talked to other experts and that they're making the decision that they think is best in their professional estimation. So I just wanted to start by saying that. I'm not a bear expert, I'm also not a police officer, I'm not a wildlife expert, that's what we have experts here for. You're not going to find anybody who loves borage, wildlife, anything more than I do, okay? But we've got Chief Mix in consultation with Mass Wildlife and Fisheries, who has identified that there's one particular bear that has on a number of occasions has killed livestock, and, which is not highly unusual, but is a bit alarming. And then furthermore, has shown not the type of fear towards humans that ought to be shown by a black bear in particular, who tend to not be confrontational at all. And that sort of increases the level of concern that Mass Wildlife Fisheries and the chief have. So I'm just going to read a couple little, this is what Mass Wildlife Fisheries, and again, the opinions expressed here are not my own. There are many comments and questions in response to the post about bears, which we hope to help address. Mass Wildlife staff are coordinating with local police and environmental police to monitor this situation. While the bear has attacked livestock, it is not exhibited behavior that it poses a direct threat to human safety. Mass Wildlife is not attempting to euthanize the bear, however, lethal removal by law enforcement may be required if they determine there is a threat to public safety. And this next paragraph is extremely important since people keep saying relocate the bear. Relocation is not an option for bears causing property damage, as it would transfer this problem behavior to another community. Bears that have learned to raid chicken coops or attack livestock will not stop that behavior if they are moved elsewhere. The only animals that are relocated by Mass Wildlife and Environmental Police are moved to resolve an immediate public safety threat, not caused by the animal's behavior, but by the location of the animal, for example, in a highly urban area where the presence of the animal will likely cause a vehicle collision. It is possible that the bear will move out of the area on its own. Black bears spend more time in residential areas when they find food such as bird seed, trash, unprotected backyard chickens and goats, and outdoor pet food. Mass Wildlife staff have already spoken with landowners in the area who have experienced property damage and provided advice on how to remove food sources and protect livestock with properly maintained electric fencing. As the bear range expands eastward towards the most densely populated communities of Massachusetts, it is critical that the public be proactive and take a few simple precautionary measures to help keep bears wild. And then they give their link to the mass.gov bears. But in short, what they're saying is if you truly love these bears, then don't make them feel welcome in your backyard by providing all of these things that are attracting them to the backyard and are going to end in a collision of humans with bears that will likely not end in a positive way. Yes, Mr. Hill?
I have a question that probably nobody in this room can answer, but I'm, at this time of year, many people decorate with pumpkins on their front yard. Is that something people should be discouraged to do?
Correct.
Right now, yes.
They have put that all over all of the posts.
I mean, I don't see pumpkins in particular mentioned.
But they're eating pumpkins, that's why I wanted.
This one did eat pumpkins once, yeah.
It's eating, it's literally been photographed, eating pumpkins, taking pumpkins off of people's porches.
Okay.
Yes.
And what we've also heard, that people, when they're done with a pumpkin, should bring them into the woods and smash them, which seems like that is also discouraged at this point.
They were feeding the deer with the pumpkins and the best. So I went to the meeting today down in Halifax, and the point that I made when I was there was this, yes, the bear are here, but they just got here for many people.
Yep.
And expecting everyone to be prepared for something they weren't expecting, and castigating them because they're complaining because their animals are getting killed is so wrong, I can't even, I was very upset today to listen to the wildlife people because they were basically saying it's their fault. They didn't know.
No, we've got to adjust, that's all.
These people had secure barns, they did do their due diligence for the predators that they knew were here.
Yes.
We protect our chickens, I've got bees, I had a visit from the bear, it ended well. But I've got chickens, I've got bees, my chickens are very well protected, my bees aren't, and they will be, they're going to happen.
But you couldn't predict it was, this was going to happen.
This is the problem, nothing could have predicted this. This bear, this one bear.
Yeah.
Has to be dealt with because he is this bold. But going forward, we have to protect the bears by taking care of our fortresses around our animals. We're the ones that have to protect the bear.
This is just new to us, but I mean, a lot of people that live in New Hampshire or Vermont or whatever, this is just part of their daily life, and they've just figured out, you know what, you can't keep trash out there, you can't do. I mean, I remember a couple years ago, I was up in Vermont with my cousin, we're out at a pizza place, and my husband's like, Laura, there's a bear going through the dumpster. So I said to my cousin, excuse me, Jimmy, but should we be concerned? And he's like, oh, they don't care about you, there's all kinds of stuff they're getting in the dumpster. So it's part of their everyday life. We just aren't used to it. So you're right, now that we know that this is probably not going to go away, we've got to change our behavior, and then if there is a problem, like I said, we'll have to defer to the, you know, to the officials to deal with it in the way that they think is the best for the town.
I will say one thing about threat to humans, I think having to have your seven-year-old child climb onto a roof to get away from a bear that he encountered in his backyard is kind of a threat to people.
I would say.
And that did happen, that is verified.
And did they report it to Mass Wildlife?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but it's like, well, maybe you shouldn't let your kids run around the backyard, I mean, come on.
Yeah.
Come on.
Again, you can't predict that your little person's going to.
He went out to, they went out to feed the chickens.
Yeah.
And the thing came back for another round of goat.
So I just know there's been a lot out there, and I just want to say, well, Chief Mix and his guys are doing the best they can, they're really trying to protect us, serve and protect, that's what their motto is, they're trying to do it. I just ask that we try to support them and not condemn, you know, them for doing their job. And again, I assure you that he is not just unilaterally, you know, a bear hater who's trying to go out there and kill bears. He feels very, you know, very conflicted about it because he also loves animals and doesn't want to do it. But he's got a job to do, and he's consulting with Mass Wildlife and Fisheries and the other experts. So anyway, I didn't mean to go on and on about it, but every other post on Facebook has been about this, so I thought we would.
There might be, he's working, Mike is working right now on, Chief Mix is working right now on a meeting for next week, but it's going to be a Zoom meeting for everybody who couldn't go today. I think they want to do it in the evening so that people can zoom in, and they're going to have a capacity, maybe, I don't know, but he said 500 could zoom in, I mean, we'll see how many people.
Well, if you can, Ms. Green, if you can, you know, it's very anxiety provoking for people. Again, I think it's just because it's new and it's not part of our everyday life yet, but it's clear that it will be. So we're all going to have to adjust to each other. So if you can coordinate, and to the extent Chief Mix sets up that meeting, if we could help publicize it so that folks that want to be in the know or have a certain opinion that they might want to express have the ability to do that. Okay, and Chief Mix, I apologize if I completely went off all the talking points that you gave me, but I did the best I could. Okay, committee updates, Economic Development Committee, we're meeting this week, not much to report there. However, I will say, one of the committees that was not here was the Regional Agreement Committee. And I know everybody had conflicts on Mondays, they were supposed to meet last night, they're rescheduling it for two weeks from.
November 20th.
Yeah, for the 20th, and I am going to take one for the team.
Thank you.
So, and I.
Big time.
Mean that sincerely, so.
I mean it sincerely also, thank you, that's big.
So I will report back and I will carry that flag forward. So I'm not going to say anything else on that. Okay, Highway Committee, I'm sorry, High Street Park Committee.
I'll just keep it quick, we had, I regrettably could not attend it today, but we had a meeting with, not a meeting really, an informational session with some park strategists out of Plymouth, and they gave some tips on what to look for and how to develop, you know, a park and, you know, best practices, so we're doing that. We had a site walkthrough a couple of weeks ago, Lisa was there, did a really good job of being able to kind of lay the land and, you know, answer some questions that Butters and others, just interested parties had. So we're just kind of plugging along, I mean, there's still a lot of work that has to get done, but.
And you've got your open house coming up.
Yeah, the open house and the announcements, yep.
That's going to be excellent, hopefully we can pump up the volume on that, so, because again, a lot of people have expressed on Facebook various opinions of things that should be done, but business seldom gets conducted on Facebook, so showing up at the meetings is a good, helpful way of.
That's the biggest piece, is that we're having more and more attendance from just citizens in general that are interested. I can't emphasize enough that, you know, we have a pretty transparent communicative board, and we also have the luxury of having, you know, Lisa and Eric and Tony and all these other folks from Town Hall that are very much interested in making sure that we're moving forward and taking everybody's considerations, you know, as they bring them up. So just, you know, keep coming, keep showing up, keep sending us your ideas and things like that. We do have finalized plans, which is a huge step in getting things moving forward, but it doesn't mean that the things that are on there are finite, so any last-minute things that you want us to be aware of in case we have to, we're trying to keep a running list of just different changes that might have to be made, because the plans are years in the making, but we want to make sure we get it right, so.
So there's still a chance for people to influence it a little bit if they'd like.
There is, yeah, there is a chance, because, you know, the lay of the land when the plans first started years ago, it might be different now. We do have a good idea of what we're trying to do, but we really want to start moving forward, filling out grants, getting some revenue sources, starting to break ground, starting to clear land. We can't do any of that unless we get everybody's opinion, because we just don't want to stall anymore, we want to move forward and give the town a good place to have some additional recreation, some good places to take prom pictures. So, you know, make sure that you come to these things so we can move forward.
Okay, that's awesome, good pitch. Highway Committee, anything, have we gotten the report back?
No, we haven't gotten that. He basically told me right up front that we probably have it in December.
Okay, all right, just keep firm pressure on him to get that delivered in the timeframe. McQuon Property Reuse Committee, we still have openings. If you're out there and you're watching us, then we know that you might potentially have time to join us in influencing what the property is going to be like. You may or may not have seen several posts where we are showing the McQuon teardown, and it's nearing completion. Do we have an ETA on that, by the way?
Not yet, but they're making really good progress. Most of the back of the building, which was the larger part, is down, and Building Inspector Carrie Glass and I were over there today, and it's really amazing how neat this company is keeping the materials.
Yeah.
They're literally separating the different materials, the rock and metal from, you know, vinyl plates, and, so it's very neat. I would say not much longer, I would say within a month, they will probably have the rest of the school down. They're making very, very good progress on this.
Okay, and so then we will have a clean footprint, and very seldom, going forward, are we going to have an opportunity where we've got it with High Street, where we have a clean footprint and we can reimagine what we want there. Well, similarly, at McQuon, we've got some other needs that we might be able to fill there, and we can reimagine what we want to have there. So I will invite you, if you've got opinions, to join the committee, because that's where business gets done, and not on Facebook. So apply, we've got openings, you can look under volunteer opportunities on the Town of Hanson website, and then send it in, and we most likely will appoint you if you fill that out. Recreation Committee, I believe have got Alex Stewart and.
I'd like us to take a peek at Recreation, and maybe talk about it more specifically, because I think we had, when we had created. because I think when we had created this, we had tasked them, once they had a committee, with coming up with like a mission and a vision and pitching it back to us. I think ironically, that might be one of the reasons why we're not getting people because we're not really giving people a concrete thing to sign up for.
All right.
Additionally, when it comes to selfishly, the High Street Park Committee, we need an overseer group that would help with the maintenance and the oversight of the park once it's up and running. We have to identify something and it's actually part of the grants. And I think the Recreation Committee might actually be a good natural fit for some of this stuff. So I want to talk about that in much broader sense.
All right. So do we want to try to talk about that at our next meeting as long as we're not jammed up?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. McDowell, do you mind putting that on? Okay, amazing. And that brings us to Transfer Station Task Force. What say you, Ms. Weeks?
There's nothing as of yet. No. We have to schedule our next meeting. We just have to coordinate schedules. That's literally the only thing getting in the way.
All right. Well, hope springs eternal. Okay. And then that brings us to approve open session minutes. So we've got October 10th and October 17th. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? All right, fantastic. And then that brings us, Ms. Green, to the Town Administrator Report.
Okay. And she has, I'd like to chair members of the board. So it's been a few weeks since my last Town Administrator Report, so this is a little longer because there's been a lot going on. Our October newsletter has been released. It was released on October 25th, so it's available on our website and the social media platforms. Hopefully, everyone is having an opportunity to look at that and we are already working on the November newsletter. So you ought to look out for that. I'm happy to report Green Communities' grant application was submitted. It was due on October 20th. We submitted that with the project of heat pump system at Town Hall for a heating and cooling system and also for hybrid vehicles for like police cruisers. If you purchase a hybrid vehicle, police cruisers, you can apply for up to $5,000 back. So since the town purchases vehicles, we put in for two hybrid police cruisers for reimbursement of $5,000 for each. So successfully submitted and now we just wait on the awards. We are still working with Hoppers to finalize the programs and leave balances for our electronic request for leave. So hopefully, we'll have the program up and running in the next few weeks. We hope to have it at least by the end of December. So moving forward with that. And again, just to piggyback on Joe, I attended the High Street Park Committee meeting. That happened on a rainy Saturday morning. It was a very good nature walk through the woods, but it really opens your eyes to see where the markers are. This is where the parking lot's going to be, you know, this is how far we have from vegetation, for the Butters. So it's really good to visualize all of that. So I really look forward to working on that and really seeing that come to life because I think it's going to be great for Hanson. And, you know, speaking of that, you know, open space, want to remind folks that the Town of Hanson does have a keen on control bylaw that requires dog owners to have their dogs on a leash when they're walking them, even no matter where you are. If it's at Smitty's Bog, the Burridge, walking them on town roads, you've got to have the dogs on a leash. We do have an animal control officer, but he's on an on-call basis. He does not patrol the town. If somebody sees an issue, has an issue with a pet owner who, the pet is not on the leash, give the police a call and they'll get in touch with the animal control officer. Joe is very responsive. So if anybody has any questions on that, they can certainly call our office. I received the draft of the Hanson personnel policies. So currently going through that, it's about 110 pages. So we did have a proofreader look through it and we're just kind of quickly going through it for content. We'll put it back to HRS, which is helping us with this to make any revisions. When it comes back, it'll be funneled out for people to review, provide feedback, and then Town Council will look at it. So it is moving along. So also the Collins Center, who are doing the classification and compensation study for us, we did get a draft report on that. Eric and I looked through it. We met with them. Eric had some concerns of how the salary ranges were presented, provided some feedback with what would make it easier to understand. So they are reworking that and as soon as we get that document, we'll look at it again and then start getting it out to people. So again, another project that is moving to the next step. As we talked about earlier, the budget memorandum will be emailed to all the town departments on November 8th tomorrow and it's going to provide them with basically some direction on where our budget is for this year. And again, I've reached out to Jeff Simonak, Superintendent, to schedule a meeting. I met with our Maya representative, who's our new insurance carrier. We've had them for a little over a year now. So what they do is they come and they meet with Town Administrator and they go over the different policies regarding our buildings, our vehicles, liability, general liability, things like that. So they will be putting together a proposal for what the insurance rates will be. And they also provide us with an idea to put 10% to 15% as far as an increase into our budget so that we can budget properly, which is still, we're still saving money over what we were being charged by the prior insurance company. So we are still underneath what we were paying prior to that. So...
Ms. Green, excuse me, are we going to shop it around anyway, even though we think we're getting a good deal? We're going to try to see if anybody's willing to meet or beat what they're giving us?
We can, but there's not a lot of insurance agencies out there who can provide the broad amount of coverage that Maya can because they specialize in municipalities. We could certainly look for other companies to see if our old company wants to put in a, you know, a proposal. However, we'd lose the grant opportunities that we do have, Maya. We'd lose the credits that we get when we attend their free training.
The classes, I know.
I mean, we basically, we got almost $1,500 credit towards our premiums just for people to attend free trainings. So we would lose all of that if we were to go someone else who doesn't operate these. But I am certainly willing to look around. And so I am very happy to report, so the town has received Brownfield's grants. We received a Brownfield grant through the One Stop for the Hawks Ave. But we also received Brownfield grants through Old Colony Planning Council, who applied for the grants through the EPA and were awarded. So Hanson is one of the towns with three properties that were identified for this type of grant, one being Light Control, one being 751 Main Street, and one being 1057 Main Street. I was invited to be a member of the Steering Committee, who are going to oversee the grant process, the administration of the grant. The properties have already been identified, so our mission and goal is to make sure we're meeting all of the requirements that the EPA on a federal level requires. I'm going to be involved with the procurement that's going to go, with the bidding for the licensed site professional that's going to be brought on board to work on all these properties. And so this is a four-year grant, so we have four years. But this is great for the town. Hanson got the most awards. East Bridgewater got an award, Whitman got an award, Hanson, Eastern got an award, but Hanson got three. So we're very lucky in that aspect. So I look forward to serving on that committee. And also, Old Colony Planning Council invited me to be a member of their CEDS Committee, C E D S, which is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee, which basically the mission on that is to provide advice to the council on economic development issues and support and work the communities that Old Colony, they provide services to, to provide support to these communities for economic development. And it meets four times a year, so it won't take me out of the office a lot, but it keeps me very involved in Old Colony Planning Council.
I'm glad to hear that they've invited you. I'd like them to help us out. Tony's reached out from the Economic Development Committee and I have to be honest, there have been many times in my tenure that I've wondered, what are we getting from the Old Colony Planning Council? I think a lot of other towns get a lot more from them, specifically Brockton because they're located in Brockton and, you know, Brockton has a lot more needs and I understand that. But I would really hope that the partnership that you and Tony are forging with them is going to result in us getting more support from them. Once again, I hate to keep beating the same drum that we beat with the fireworks thing and that we have with other relationships that we won't get into. But it feels very similar. It's sort of like little old Hanson, you know, little old Hanson doesn't need, but no, little old Hanson wants to develop, you know, an economic base and it's key to our future. And we're putting a lot of resources and Mr. DeFrayis is putting a lot of his time and energy towards it. So I'm really hoping that we also get reciprocated. And as much as you're putting in time and investing, you know, your opinion, I'd like to get some stuff from them.
Well, Hanson has a seat at the table now, so hopefully that will generate some good support and good benefits.
I have a question going back to the insurance. You mentioned the town properties or the town properties. I know at one time we mentioned the Bonny House being in a special category and is the Bonny House insured today through the...
I think that's something we probably will discuss at another point.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I attended a couple of the Mass Municipal Management Association Boot Camp, which focuses on municipal management, how we can improve our skills with management. A lot of focus was on multi-generational dynamics of a workplace because the workplace, especially municipal government, is seeing a lot of your, let me try to get these right before I say them. We have our millennials, we have our Gen Xers, we have our Gen Zs. So we have, there's a lot of different generations that are now working in municipal government. And as the management team, we need to be focused on the different levels of education and the different way that the newer generations are looking at the workplace, workforce. So that was a lot of the focus and it's really, it opened up our eyes on how the younger generations view the workplace. And we want to be mindful of that and we want to really support it because they're our future. And it was a very good, you know, workshop on that. Basically, we learned a lot of things because, you know, I didn't know where I stood and it was interesting to see where I stand as far as being a manager. I'm actually one of the younger ones, which is interesting. Anyway. And also too, with the Women Leading Government Meeting that I attended, they had a guest speaker there who was fantastic. Her name was Carrie Stack and she is with the Say Yes Institute and promotes the power of the positive. It was a revelation to listen to her and really give us a different viewpoint of negativity and how to deal with it. So actually, she's local. So I did reach out to her to see what she would charge me to have a similar type of training, not to that extent level, but here in Hanson for our employees. It really, it really does open your eyes and make you look at things very, very differently. So it's very good attending those workshops and meetings. Eric mentioned John Madden. He is just about done with his financial analysis and he will be joining us at a December meeting to make his presentation on his findings and suggestions and recommendations. So that would be a really good time where we're going to be going into the budget season. And last but not least, I'm actually going to be away on vacation, November 27th through December 1st. I'm going to be off the continent. So my, you know, ability to look at emails will be very, very limited. So I just want to get that out there right now that I'm really looking forward to this vacation.
Agreed.
That concludes my Town Administrator Report for today.
Any update on the forensic audit?
Yes. I actually got an email today. I need to have a conversation with Mark Abrams on the, basically, he's laid out the information that he needs and we need to have a conversation with the schools of the documents that he's going to be needing. So yes, I actually got the email to him today and we're going to be talking tomorrow.
Okay, awesome. And one of the things that we had talked about with the Administrative Professionals, I don't know, I guess Administrative Professionals Union and with you about department heads was they need to make sure that on a regular basis, we are giving our employees reviews. Because it turns out if you give people feedback, they might actually work on it and you might learn something. So I know Ms. McDowell had taken a crack. We had gone back and forth and I know you're going to take a look at it and then bring it to the board for general feedback, but I just was wondering if you could queue up what the process is going to be there to finalize what the shell of the review will look like.
Yes. So Lynn researched some, a lot of different formats for evaluations and came up with a format that seems to fit the Town of Hanson very well. It fits municipality very well. We have one for Town Administrator, we have one for department heads, and we have one for employees. So basically, as soon as we just, we look over those, I will have a, I'm going to schedule a department head meeting to introduce them to the department heads. And then, once they're able to look at it and provide some feedback, we'll make some revisions if they make sense. And then I will bring them to the Wage of Personnel and the Select Board for adoption and approval. And then we'll start moving forward, hopefully at the beginning of the new year, with evaluations for both department heads and employees.
Okay, perfect. I love it. Any questions? Okay. All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. But before I entertain that motion, I want to say, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we approve open session? Do we approve those minutes?
No, we didn't think. No, yes, we did. We did.
Did we do it? Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't check it off.
Okay, that's all right. So before I do that, there has been some questions about why we're not leaving executive session and telling people the votes that we have been taking in executive session. And quite simply, it would be because we're not taking any votes in executive session other than about approving the minutes from the prior executive session. What we're discussing is litigation and we're being updated on the litigation by the professionals that are dealing with the litigation and it is not requiring the board to take any votes that we're able to disclose in an open session. One of the exceptions to discussing what is discussed in executive session is when it's litigation and the discussion could actually impact the outcome of litigation. So we therefore will not be discussing things in executive session and then coming out and bearing our souls about what we have discussed in executive session, since it would be the equivalent of shooting ourselves in the foot in terms of our legal standing. So I just wanted to clarify because there's been a few little questions out there. Okay.
It's also stated in the statement that you literally read every time before going into it.
I know that, every time. Yep, there's been questions.
Okay.
So...
People learn differently, Mr. Weeks, so I'm just trying to speak to people where they are. Okay. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to go into executive session and then I will read the executive session when we're going to go. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. And I will entertain a motion to enter executive session. We will not be returning to open session and we will be entering executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares building litigation discussion. We'll also be discussing executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes from October 10th, 2023, and October 17th, 2023. I will entertain a motion and then roll call void.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay. We're entering executive session. Thank you very much.